Good morning and welcome to the workshop meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, December 3rd, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero.
I would like to make mention of the fact that Commissioner Bowman is not here this morning, and ask that you keep him in your prayers as he is suffering like many other of our employees this morning with some kind of upper respiratory or flu that seems to be going around the county. And so, he did want to convey to you that he is sorry that he was not able to be here, and I believe this is only the second meeting that he's missed in six years, and he was rather disappointed but plans to return tomorrow. With that being said, our first item on the agenda is a presentation, and this is by Tommy Kennedy, a local pastor of G Squared Ministries, and he's here to address the board and the citizens about a particular need in the county. Good morning.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you Commissioners for hearing me. Tommy Kennedy, and I know that because we've just finished Thanksgiving that a lot of people are aware of all the different folks in our community who have a lot of needs, and a lot of times people are looking at the needs that they have and doing food drives and trying to help feed the hungry. The Helping in His Name Food Pantry does a phenomenal job in helping people within our county. However, recently, they've really had a difficult time getting enough food, and they've had the number of people who need food assistance has jumped dramatically. In October, it jumped from 1,100 to 1,264. Those numbers are big. It's an extra 164 families that needed food assistance just in October. And last month, in November, they actually had to take 20 people off of the rolls for their food distribution because those families were able to get on food stamps and they're just barely able to get by on that. And so, I come today to urge the Commissioners and to the people in our community to support Helping in His Name Food Pantry. We need to call public attention to this just because there is an ongoing need because the recession hit us tremendously hard, and there are still a lot of people who are out of work or who are underemployed, who are just barely making it. And unless the citizens of this community continue to support ministries like this that offer food to those who really, truly need it, then those families will go without. They do a really good job of screening people, so when people come in, they actually fill out an application, they go through all kinds of information to make sure that these people truly have a need. And they receive donations from churches and from businesses and from schools or for any other organizations that want to collect food. They will accept food. They also can take financial contributions, and they are often able to purchase food at 16 cents per pound. A lot of people don't realize that. So, a check to them goes a whole lot further. They can actually buy it from the Atlanta Food Bank. And so, that's a way that people can get involved and make a difference in the community. I know the government can't do everything, but we as citizens can all band together and try to help. Their organization has a website, helpinginhisname.org, and their number is 678-565-6135. That's 678-565-6135. And so, I would urge you as Commissioners and the citizens of Henry County to get involved to make a financial contribution or to collect food at your organization and to help support not just during Thanksgiving and Christmas, but throughout the year, all of these citizens in our local community who need a hand up and who can really make a difference in their lives if we do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tommy. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I know Helping in His Name has been a part of this community for over 20 years and has done a tremendous work here, helping our citizens, and the last few years have been hard, as we all know. So, ministries like this, we need to try to support and help them continue to meet the needs of our people.
... to go see the clerk to give contact information, so I've got a wife on, I've got something.
Okay. Commissioner Holder would like you to get his contact information from the clerk. He would like to speak with you concerning this. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a presentation, laws and ordinances concerning regulated businesses in Henry County. Our presenter is Lieutenant Terry Lunsford of the Henry County Police Department. That's exhibit number one in your book. Good morning.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to present for consideration and development the proposal for changing two existing ordinances and the creation of two new ones in Henry County related to regulated businesses. The state law defines a number of regulated businesses, and basically, these businesses are attractive to criminals as a venue for turning their stolen goods into cash. The law generally requires these businesses to maintain detailed records on their transactions, the items involved in the transactions, and the customers themselves. These businesses include pawnbrokers, precious metal and gem dealers, and secondary metal recyclers. Precious metal and gem dealers, the common term for those businesses is "we buy gold" type places. These state laws require these businesses to maintain their records for like a certain amount of time, two to four years, and to give law enforcement access to those records upon request or any reasonable time. It does require at least one of those businesses to report daily to the local police, and that's the "we buy gold" type places. If the law doesn't specifically require that, then a local ordinance is required to require that reporting, such as we have with the pawn shops. Law enforcement, since they are regulated businesses, is directly involved in regulating these businesses. There is a registration process required of two of them. One of them is the secondary metal recyclers, and the law specifically requires them to register with the Sheriff's Department, and the other is the "we buy gold" places. They're required to register with the police department by state law. Monitoring of these businesses falls upon the police department for the most part, where we can, like I said, we can inspect their records, make sure they're doing the reporting and all that kind of stuff like that, and that they're doing the reporting properly. We also enter items into GCIC that are like pawn or sold-to-pawn shops so that they become searchable through GCIC and NCIC nationwide if the need arises for agencies. We sometimes with the registration process and/or to operate a business, there are qualifications in the local ordinance and state law that must be met for the owners and/or the employees, and that simply requires background checks and investigations. And there's also, on a very regular basis unfortunately, investigations involved where we have to investigate the potential that property may be stolen that has been purchased at one of these locations and determine whether that is or is not the property and recover that property for the victims if we can. Lees Online is something we acquired less than two years ago with a grant. It is a regulated electronic reporting system that has been a tremendous boon, almost from day one. It proved beneficial. The grant has expired. The funds have been expended to pay for the first two years of that service. Beginning next year, we will have to budget to pay for this service, so it will be an actual monetary cost involved with it. As I said, it's been very beneficial in recovering property, solving crimes. The cities of Hampton, Los Grove, McDonough, and Starbridge are all participating in this, so all the regulated businesses in Henry County are being asked to or required to report into the system so that we all have a common shared database with this thing. We don't have our own private databases, our own private records we can access at all just from a keyboard. In fact, Lees Online is a national database. All the agencies nationwide or jurisdictions that use Lees Online and have the reporting system, we can see the stuff and search it. Bad guys don't recognize boundaries, and that's a big benefit. The service itself on the business, from the business point of view, is free. There's no cost to them. In fact, they will give them a free fingerprint scanner and a free digital camera if they need one. And because of these actual expenses, the time, the things that we have to do in Lees Online and stuff like that, state law allows us to actually assess regulatory fees against regulated businesses. And believe it or not, we're not doing that, except in the case of pawn shops. The state law also aligns how we determine what those fees are or how methods to determine that fee, and these fees are in addition so it's clear you have a business licensing cost to operate. You have registration fees like with the secondary metal recyclers that is stated in law that they got to pay a certain amount. The background checks are not free. They have to be paid for. And then, there are regulatory fees to help cover all these other costs. They're in addition to all that. Currently, Henry County only charges as said to pawn shops, and that fee has been set at $1,500 many years ago. I can only assume or just guess that many years ago when this was done, we only had pawn shops. We didn't have the "we buy golds." We didn't have the secondary metal recyclers, and it just never got extended like it should have been. The... So, basically, I'm saying that we just need to expand and update our ordinances. And basically, one thing we want to do is update the terminology. A lot of times, they say reporting or stuff is done in writing. We can probably expand that to say that writing can be electronic writing, electronic stuff. And also, to include the possibility of digital imagery. We can take pictures of the items, pictures of the people, the driver license, in the case of regular businesses, the vehicles, and all kinds of stuff like that. With Lees Online, we can see those pictures. Another thing is to require reporting in the foreign format and method as required by the police department. Unfortunately, with at least one of these businesses, we have to request the cooperation. We can't require it, and the local ordinance would help do that. And to establish clearly the regulatory fees for all the businesses, not just pawn shops, and to include new ordinances for the businesses we don't have them for now. And to be specific about the ordinances we're talking about, the first one up is pawn shops. We do have an ordinance for pawn shops. It's to be, as I said, to update it to be, I want to be more inclusive of title pawns. There are two types of pawn shops. When we think of pawn shops, we think of you go in there and you can sell a pawn just about anything. But there are also title pawns that deal exclusively with vehicle titles, but they're still a pawn shop. To update our terminology is discuss to include like digital imagery, you know, electronics kind of things. To clearly establish, establishes what qualifies as photo identification. I've had this asked of me by the businesses more than once. What do you mean by that? And it's to clarify that it's some kind of officially issued government ID with the necessary information and photo on it, not just like an employer card from your employer or something like that. And it has to be current. To establish reporting as we direct them to, if the terminology is correct, we won't have to revise ordinances in the future to allow us to do something like this if we word it right, because we can just adapt with changes in technology, changes in laws so that we can just redirect them on how we want it done. To establish a county issued badge process, we have a badge process in the county for alcohol badges that involves background checks. Well, when they register and like with pawn shops and "we buy gold" type places, they are, there's requirements of the owners and/or the employees, and the only way to meet those requirements is do a background check, which means, which essentially what alcohol process is, to get your badge. So, why not just go ahead and issue them badges as well that they wear while they're working there? It's kind of like a little thing for the citizens that they've been vetted, they qualify to work here, they're, you know, they meet the standards and stuff like that, and go ahead and do that as well. We can also limit the hours of operation, just in case they get the idea they want to operate 24/7. We can prevent that. And to clearly establish regulatory fees. The next one is the, our occupational tax and business ordinance. In there, it does touch on regulatory fees, but all it says about them is as defined in state law. So, I want to add a bullet in there that says that we can levy and that it says regulatory fees as well, not just that as defined in law. And then, we want to create a new ordinance for "we buy gold," all the same tenants we've just discussed, including that. It is to be very reflective of the existing current state law. There is one thing to note, the ID badge. Just to be clear about "we buy golds," it would also include jewelry stores that buy from the public, just so you know. But the law, that particular law says that local ordinance can be established more additional requirements and qualifications. And it also says when they buy a piece of jewelry, they have to hold it for at least a minimum of seven days. Well, that's kind of a short time when it comes to getting something reported stolen, trying to figure out where it might be, and then recovering it. So, pawn shops have a 30-day window, and I would like to also increase that 30 days on them as well and just make it a standard for all regulated businesses like that, or the both of the regulated businesses. The next one is the secondary metal recyclers. There is a big questions with this one. They passed this law in July of this year, the state law. It was completely revamped. They do have in this state law had requirement of electronic reporting. The problem is that the electronic reporting is due to the state of Georgia and not locally. And the bigger problem is, the state of Georgia doesn't have such a system. Apparently, from what I understand, until the state of Georgia allocates the funds, acquires a system, and gets it in place, this reporting is not going to happen. I don't know how long that will be. Surely, it's going to be at least a year before they can get something like that, if not longer. So, in the meanwhile, I would like to be able to require these businesses to report into our electronic system. Three of the four that we have in the county are doing this on their own cooperation. It also, there's a, to, I don't know if we can include the ID badge requirement in there because in the state law, there aren't the little background things like there are in the others, or we don't have an ordinance. I'm wondering if we can extend that in there. The other question is, there is a line or a bullet in that law that says that it overrides all local ordinances, except in the area of regulatory fees, business licenses, zoning, stuff like that. So, I'm wondering if we can actually create this law, but I'm thinking that if we, if our ordinance is in line with the state law, if, that we can actually probably do this. It's just a question of what we can include in it. The, but in closing, all the expected, the expected results of all this is that the police will be able to better monitor and require these businesses to report as directed by them rather than sometimes request them to report. To clearly establish regulatory fees to reduce the burden on the taxpayers for the costs related to the regulations, regulatory activities. To increase the recovery rate stolen property for victims because the data is more conveniently available and accessible and searchable to the point of the next day most of the time. And to establish the ID badge process and to, but these laws are not ready for presentation for passing on the board, but because there's some legal questions and inclusions that need to be answered. For instance, one, what about home-based businesses? You want to do a "we buy gold" type operation out of your house or a secondary rental recycler out of, type business out of your house? How are we going to address those? And will we allow them? Will we want to allow them? Stuff like that. And that's my presentation. I'll be glad to try and answer any questions you want me to have.
Does any member have a question or comment?
I have some comments and questions. My first question would be to the county attorney, and that is, I don't see your signature on this sheet. Have you reviewed this?
I did review it. I also met with Lieutenant Lunsford and Major Ammerman about a month ago. We went over these, and we decided that the best format for moving forward would be to present something of this nature to you all during a workshop session to get the conversation started with you all. But due to the holidays and for whatever other reasons, I did not receive the information in sufficient time to sign off before I got into your agenda books, but I have reviewed it, Commissioner.
And my comment would be, with these new laws being in their infancy, as far as at the state level, Terry, you'd mentioned the fact that they didn't even have their system up and running yet. All of this needs to very much needs to be coordinated through the county attorney because there are going to be people out there, and some of the people you're dealing with here can hire the best of attorneys to beat you on whatever you do to offend them. So, my suggestion would be that everything that we do as far as trying to create or enforce or regulate, that it be coordinated through the county attorney because if we're one step outside the law, those are the kind of people that will come after you, and we win unfortunately. And one thing too, you mentioned title pawn. That's something that has always really bothered me because you see advertisements on TV about we, our rates are one-half of what everybody else's rates are. And again, state law allows title pawns to charge like 50% interest, and when they say they're charging half, they're charging somebody 25% interest. They are preying on the people who can afford the least, and I don't want to get into that can of worms, but I'm just telling you, I have a burrow in the saddle when it comes to that because there are times that people have to have money, understand that. But these are, these people, we're talking about predatory lending, and I certainly don't want to get into that either, but the point is, these are firms that make a lot of money on the people who can afford it the least, and that is very, very much a concern of mine.
Any other board member have a question or comment?
Just one thought, and Latonya, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to check with any other counties to see if they're following a similar progression as far as updating their ordinances, but it might be good to kind of put your collective brains together and come up with the best ordinance that will, as Mr. Holder said, stand up in court when it's challenged.
We've looked at some. Lieutenant Lunsford, the things, the ones that are online, he's looked at them. He's given some to me, and we've reviewed them, and with the exception of the secondary metal ordinance statute that he referenced as being, we had a lot of questions about. I think that's the one thing that remains questionable at this point before we can make a final recommendation, but we certainly will do that, Chairman.
We have been in communication. I presented her with all these things and to work, then, we just thought we'd present it out here so that the process can get started and what we want to do or don't want to do and what we can include, can't include, and the technicalities of law and such as that, and she'll be involved with that. I have provided, they do have some thumb drives for you guys. It has a bunch, the proposal that I've sent her along with a bunch of legal references of the state laws and other jurisdictions as well that have some ordinances and stuff like that that they can provide you with.
Okay. Mr. Holder?
One final comment of mine, and when we're talking about secondary recyclers, somebody has a number out there as to how many dollars the public has been ripped off with people stealing copper, stealing air conditioners, stripping homes. Something has to be done, and I appreciate the effort, and I know the state's trying to do it to try to prevent some of this as far as identification and what have you. But it's unbelievable the amount of copper and other metals that are being stolen out of homes that people either occupy or those that are non-occupied. It's cost the people and insurance companies tons of money, and it is something that needs to be addressed, and I appreciate you.
Yeah, I think that's part of the catalyst behind the new law that got passed in July in reference to secondary.
It is, and they've been working on that for some time, and it's, it needs to be in place and it needs to be enforced. We just need to be right with our enforcement because if we don't, as I said, they have the means of hiring the best to beat us, and we don't want to lose.
Right. I would encourage the board too to take the changes with you and continue to review them, and if something crops up that you have a question about or a suggestion, feel free to get that to the county attorney. And so, we should see this back in, I guess, when it's done, right? Several weeks?
I don't know. Depends on how quick we can get those legal questions answered and whether or not we can do this or that.
It'll be a month or month.
Hopefully, sooner the better with me, but yeah, so maybe January for sure, maybe? Yeah? January?
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation, defined benefits plan. Our presenter is Fred Alletta, county manager, and Mike Bush, the finance director, and that's exhibit number two in your book.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Back during the budget process, I mentioned there were a couple of items that the budget did not address, and there were about six of them at the time. One did violate, and one did get addressed, and one of the six I had was furloughs, and that was addressed. But one of the items of the six was pension, which is the unfunded liability. Real quickly, if I can put this up, this is coming out of the, can I? I messed things up here, sorry. Anyways, at the present time or as of the, first of this year, our unfunded liability, which I mentioned earlier, and this year, it stands at $42.7 million. And if you take a look at it by year, the initial year when the plan was put in place, $24 million of the $42 million is still from the initial liability, unfunded liability that's outstanding.
Can you please explain unfunded liability to those who may be in attendance that doesn't understand that?
I'll do it in as quick layman terms as I can, as opposed to the technical side. I've got Steve Vaughn here for more technical aspects. Real quickly, it's a calculation that's done by actuaries that say, based on the people in the plan, based on increases or no increases, how the plan is set up, based on the criteria for retirement, be it five-year, tip vesting, ten-year, and so on, they come up and say, based on that, you should have X dollars in the plan as at the end of that year. And then, based on that, they take a look at where you're at and come up with what's called an actuarial gain or actuarial loss. That's a quick layman's terms, I think. So, basically, what this shows is at the end of each year, based on the biggest concern and the actuarial side of it for the county, for any plan in the last couple of years with the Great Recession, has been that the returns that were expected, our plan was set up originally with an 8% return, then it was reduced to seven and three-quarters, which it presently is at. And of course, during the Great Recession, if you were getting a minus 20%, you probably were doing good, which meant at the end of the day, you really were a minus 27 and three-quarters if that was the return you got or lost, primarily because of the need also to create that kind of an investment return. So, basically, most, and this is one of the biggest things you read about in the newspaper, cities, counties, states, with their pension plans, some counties, states, some county cities have actually gone bankrupt in some cases primarily from a lot of different things in their budgeting and their funding and so on, and pension plan seems to sometimes be at the top. If you look at California, they have the bigger problems and their pension plan was people retiring at $100,000-plus dollars a year, and they were not funding it during those years. We're nowhere near that, and we don't have those kind of retirements either. So, basically, the starting point for me was, as I said, is this needs to be addressed at some point. If we continue to have losses, this is going to end up increasing. We did have two years of gains, as you saw. The other thing that I will point out is, at the present time, we are matching 8.8% of the employees' payroll. You will see down here, the recommended contribution for the plan in '11 was 11.1, and it's 11.4 this year, so you can see it's gone up. I believe prior year, it was 10, in the 10s. So, each year, we're seeing that unfunded liability causing the issue to where the recommended contribution to get the plan on track is at 11, and now at 11.4%. The required, which is, again, just as the word said, required, is 8.4, and that has gone up from where it was the year before because we had some credits, but it's 8.4, and we're putting in 8.8. So, we're four tenths higher than the required, but not at the 11.4 recommended, which again is to help us reduce that unfunded. So, there is a gap.
That began back in 2003 when the plan was initially set up.
Yes, and that's what I was showing here is that when the plan was put in in January of '03, and I'll touch that in a minute, as you can see, the initial liability when the plan was put in was $20.4 million. And again, that was because the funding at the time that was put in is dollars to start the plan versus the calculation of how many people are going to be in it, how they're going to retire, at what rates, returns, and so on and so forth. So, the fund at that time was underfunded, but again, amortized over 30 years to make it up, and at this point, the amortization is not catching up with it. So, that's just a real broad-brushed issue or a present part of that. And what I'm trying to do here in today's workshop is to... And what I'm trying to do here in today's workshop is to present what I feel to be a possible solution to this issue. I had promised earlier in the year that I would actually try to present a new pension plan, defined benefit plan for new employees, so that the contract that the county has made with existing employees is not touched. So the key to this whole plan is to leave the present plan in place for current employees and any new employees, as you'll see throughout the presentation, starting January of this year, January thirteenth, they will be on this, what I'm proposing to be a new plan. As a result of the different stipulations of the new plan, it will create a lesser liability, it's still all one plan, it's sort of a part A, part B, and as a result, that eight point eight contribution, I feel, will be able to, over a series of years, get to that required and, and recommended, to get down to where we're presently at and possibly lower between the two plans and creating the different benefits.
Before you start, this part, Fred, Commissioner Holmes and I were talking, I just want to make sure, so while I'm watching this in digest, and I can know, I know the city of Atlanta, that, you know, their mayor was, a lot of experts have said he's done a good job of navigating this, are what we are recommending here, is it similar to what the city of Atlanta's done, or is it different? I mean, just before you started the presentation, I wanted to kind of know the compare and contrast.
I can tell you, I've only watched the news and heard what the mayor has been complimented on to grasp, get a hold of their pension plan, and I don't know the particulars. I've been having thoughts of what I basically have seen through the years, back in the eighties, I think, is when it started, a lot of people, primarily union-type companies, had a DB plan, and many of them went bankrupt, and as a result, those DBs ended up going to the government under CD, under, can't think of the name of the federal program that they take it over, and as a result, even my brother was working at the steel mills twenty-nine years, and by the time they shut down, he ended up getting about thirty percent of what he was going to get because the government took it over, so even in that case, they weren't protected. What you saw through the eighties, I believe, was airlines, auto, and some of the others started creating a Plan A and a Plan B, as I just said, which is existing and future. And some of it had to do with wages, and the factories, if you would, they were being paid thirty or forty dollars an hour, the new employees were coming in at fifteen and twenty dollars, so you did have people working at different rates, but preserved the contract that they had with the existing employees, and the new employees, when they came, knew what they were getting, and were preserved that contract as well. So what I'm presenting, I can't say is what City of Atlanta's done, and I can research it and find out, I just, this is something through my years of experience in business and watching other industries try to come up with something that will preserve and take care of the future of the county for its sustainability in this area.
It should be noted that a lot of those companies, as you said, that changed their plans, you know, I work with a number of airline pilots and others, they went to define contribution plans versus defined benefits, so I was actually in favor of the employees that you guys stayed on the defined benefit discussion. Go ahead, I just wanted.
And that is an option, I mean, what I'm presenting at today is, at this workshop, is a single option, one that can be, I can explore further, but what I'm trying to do address is the issue that I mentioned four months ago or so with the budget process, this is, this is a real looming problem that needs to be considered. This is, quote, as I said, a possible solution, and again, like I says, it preserves for the current employees, the contract, verbal as it may be, that their plan will continue to go on in the fashion it is, and the county will be able to still operate, if this is the case, a defined benefit plan, so that employees who come in after January still have a defined benefit plan, and some of the numbers I'll show quickly on here, we'll, we'll point some of the differences out, of course, but.
And I wanted to kind of comment on what you had asked about the city of Atlanta, because I have a little bit of information on that since my husband just recently retired. I'm not sure what the new plan is, but new hires coming on with the city have a different plan than the current existing employees, but I do know that the current existing police department pension anyway, their multiplier changed for the current employees. In other words, they reduced the multiplier, they kept it in place for years, if they had been there ten years, for the first ten years, they render this multiplier, but from this point forward, they changed the multiplier for those years of service, so they're.
Was that grandfather again, that situation?
Pretty much, no, they, and so.
What vesting period?
Fifteen years.
Wow, then.
Yes, fifteen years. And Gwinnett County has gone to a defined contribution plan instead of a defined benefit plan, so.
That means like a 401K with a matching is what, a defined contribution?
Yes.
Was that our salary?
For a police officer?
For across the board, I think our average salary is somewhere around thirty-seven, thirty-eight. My concern.
I don't think it's much more than that.
Okay, okay.
I can't quote the number, but I know when we did the budget, I thought I had taken the number of employees, but I didn't, total dollars, obviously, for an average, and I thought it was in the high thirties or low forties as an average.
And I didn't mean to take us off track, because I know you all have a presentation, but I just wanted to kind of.
There are changes, there are changes that are going on universally, it's not just something that Henry County's dealing with.
Yeah, you, you know, the issue of pension, as I said, is a lively topic, primarily because of the fact, as I say, cities have, in some states, especially California, like I said, have not addressed it, now they have to. Just to make a point, I was starting on before, is our wage, our total wage package, if you would, just not package, but wages, salaries, not benefits, just salaries, is approximately sixty million dollars a year of our total budget. If we had to raise our contribution, our matching contribution from eight point eight to eleven point eight, and I'm using eleven eight versus the eleven four that was just presented, just to make it easy and round numbers, that'd be an additional three percent. That means that our budget next year, if we had to go to eleven point eight, would be an additional three percent of sixty, or one point eight million dollars. That wouldn't give the first dime to employees in raises, be it public safety or the employees themselves, it wouldn't give us a dollar to help us to do road resurfacing, capital expenditures, and so on. So, again, this is a means of, again, offering something to future employees that still is a defined benefit, but at the same time, trying to work that unfunded liability down and preserve what we presently have for the employees, and not have to go in the future to an eight point eight, hopefully, over eight point eight percent.
Fred, given, given the fact that, you know, the thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars average wage paid to our employee, given that fact, and also the doubling of the vesting period to ten years, don't you think that would have another, another associated cost to it in terms of turnover and not being able to attract the very best?
I, I, I don't, and here's the reason why. The present employees, again, under the present plan of five-year vesting is still in place for anybody hired prior to. Any employee who takes a job after January first realizes when they come in, it's a ten-year vested period. Now, the difference of what I'll show in the percentages for credit per year changes, but it's still a DB plan where they will have that defined benefit at the end of whatever period. People coming to work, if you're in your twenties and thirties even, I think Commissioner Preston can vouch this, and I've been in numbers all my, all my, all my life been in numbers and these type of things, finance things, and even myself, a CPA and whatever, until forty came, it was like, gee, I might retire sometime, up till then, you're invincible, who's thinking about retirement? So this, basically, for an employee coming in at age twenty or twenty-five, be it in public safety or anywhere else, ten years of employment is nowhere near at thirty-five, ready to retire at sixty-five, and that may go up in future years, as we know with all the talks that are going on in Washington, and just living longer and so on. So if, if a person's coming here for a pension plan at age twenty-five or thirty-five to get five years and leave, then that's not a long-term employee, that pension plans are designed to bring employees to stay. The plan is such that you want somebody to stay twenty years and thirty years, so the tenure becomes less of an issue of vesting, or less of an issue for a pension plan than it is the employment time that you want them to be here to earn a benefit, if you would, for staying as long as they did, and assisting them with their social security when they retire, if it's there in twenty years, or whatever other plans that they've set aside, four fifty-seven, four oh-one As, and things like that. So this is, this is a complement to everything else they do, but gives them some guarantee at the end of that period of time.
We're not providing an incentive for anybody to stay by doubling the vesting period, because, I mean, we haven't given any raises in the last five or six years, now we're going to double the vesting period.
Again, I want to emphasize, this is not.
Or any type of motivation to stay with a particular employee.
Excuse me, I'm sorry about that. This is not to affect the current employee, so as far as an employee who is presently here, the incentive at five years was the incentive to get to the vesting, that is still there. If that was the reason they came, they wanted to get to five years, once they got to five, they feel they can really move on, they still can under the old plan for the present employees. If a new employee coming in at the first of the year, to your point, they don't get an increase for five years, as our present employees haven't got. I think the incentive for staying is as much taking care of them pay-wise as it is worrying about the pension. Today, if you're thirty, thirty-five years old, you've got to take care of your family, and if the cost of living is going up each year and you don't have a paycheck, what you're putting or going to get from your pension plan in five years, far in five years or ten years, becomes, in my opinion, less concern to them, they got to pay those grocery bills and fuel and rents and mortgage payments and whatever else with what they're making. So I think the bigger issue there, as I see it, is what's their take-home pay? And again, at thirty-five, most people go, I need the money now, I'm not worried about, I'm going to have a pension plan at sixty-five. And this is something that at least allows them that benefit to take care of that insecurity or thought that they don't even consider today when they get there.
You kind of, I don't know if you were lumping me because I was a CPA, or if I was because I was in that thirties range still, but I wanted to, from the employment standpoint, Commissioner Holmes has a point, but I want to kind of expand upon it, is that with young people are the ones that are impacted a lot when they come on, that they, they want, you know, if we talk about the police department and public safety, we have the five-year compression issues and other things, it might not, it might help us to consider in the future that new employees, and I know this is not part of today's presentation, but it's worth noting, a defined contribution plan might allow some flexibility for employees to where, instead of having to do an eight point eight percent matching on the county, you could do some other thing, other alternative, but increase their pay, because it is, it's, this locks in everybody, and essentially serves as golden handcuffs for our existing employees, because they're getting something that will not be offered in the future, so there's more incentive actually for them to stay, employees. But for our new incoming employees, you know, especially the younger people, I don't know if defined benefits are as much, because I think most people who are young don't believe they're going to get social security, and I think a lot of them are probably very anxious if they really go get all the pensions that have been promised to them too, because of all the financial issues. So there might be, what Commissioner Holmes is talking about, there might be an alternative here, but I still want to give you all the chance to kind of show what y'all researched and put together.
And just to comment along those lines, as you mentioned, DB or DC, defined contribution, you know, putting more money in their pocket if they choose to, of course, the issue then becomes, as I said earlier, am I worried about having a paycheck that's larger than what it is and worrying about a pension? Am I worried about having enough grocery money to do it, and with an increase in pay or not? The key is that they, the employee, without a defined benefit plan, are responsible, obviously, to wake up one day and have money in there and manage it. And by manage it, means that as we've gone through just in the past decade, the two thousand one and the two thousand seven and eight, I'm a, I'm a baby boomer, and I can tell you, the, thank goodness for being a little bit head of the curve and putting my money in a safe money market fund, earning nothing, as opposed to, again, putting it in other funds that, you know, you make five percent, and the next year, you lose twenty percent, and it takes forever to get it back, and then once that happened after oh-one, you're now in oh-seven and oh-eight, and you're, you know, what you recovered from oh-one, you lose again in one year. So that is something, again, employees don't think about at that age, it's not, again, they've got a family to raise, just themselves to take care of, maybe, but at the end of the day, it's, the plan itself is just there as a benefit, and it is something to get them thinking, and as far as five or ten or whatever the vesting period is, again, as you just even said, it's not as, in the forefront of their mind, being five years or ten years, they come to work here, and they come to work here and feel they're treated right, and getting the raises or whatever they need to make a living, they're not job hoppers, they're going to be here for twenty years. So it can go either way, I think, and as far as, again, I'm making a presentation here of a, an alternative to leaving at status quo and doing nothing.
Sure.
And, and the status quo is going to continue possibly to add more to our unfunded, possibly cost the county money if we have to increase our percentage of match, if we don't have some good years at seven point seven-five return on investments of our fund balance. Real quickly, I put a PowerPoint here to present, as it says here, we started a defined benefit plan and, for all full-time employees in July of two thousand and three. Staff, myself, is proposed, is proposing a second defined plan for all full-time employees, and I put it in red so everybody understands, hired on or after twelve thirty, January first, two thousand and thirteen, I'll emphasize throughout all this, this second proposed plan is, again, for new employees. Slides are for the adoption amendments, number four to the plan, we'll get into that at the end, and they'll identify the differences, again, between today's and the one being proposed after twelve thirty-one. The original plan for all employees hired before twelve thirty-one starts out with, there are three classes today, class one, regular employee hired prior to twelve thirty-one twelve, second group is public safety employees, there's a definition in the plan for that, and the third class is county commissioners. Again, everything is before, because up until any changes, everything is class one, two, three, without any distinction of twelve thirty-one, but in putting in a new proposed plan, there becomes a distinction between date. The only thing here is, that you say is that the class one also has now a class ten for the comparable regular employees, which are hired after twelve thirty-one, the class two will have a comparable class eleven, which are public safety hired after twelve thirty-one, and finally, class twelve for county commissioners who take office after twelve thirty-one twelve. I don't have a clear definition of this, and this is part of discussion for it, some conversation to be had as to, does that mean, as an new, as an employee today, it's pretty clear you're employed and you're moving on. The question is, for the commissioners who are on board today and continue to get elected and re-elected, staying under the old plan or becoming a new one is a key element of your consideration. I'm not making judgment one way or the other, I'm just merely stating for the needed definition of after twelve thirty-one being, is that a commissioner who gets re-elected two years or four years down the road, they consider it on a new one, or do they, because they were previously in office, stay under the old one? Again, I'm not making a judgment, and it's something for consideration, just a definition needs to be done. The employees that are presently on payroll as class one, their normal retirement is sixty, you can early reduce retirement at age fifty-five, I believe it's about eight percent per year that you retire early. Employee vests in five years, they receive two and a half percent credit for each year of service, up to thirty-five years. An employee who works twenty years will get fifty percent of their retirement, which is a two and a half percent times twenty years. An employee, a regular employee now class ten, which means they're hired after twelve thirty-one, the retirement is raised from sixty to sixty-five, this is still less than the social security, which even from my generation, we're at sixty-six, and I believe after mine, I think, it even goes to sixty-seven, and who knows where it's going to be in a couple of years with Congress trying to fix social security. Early reduced retirement is age sixty, again, keeping to the five years, again, same percentage of reduction as under the present plan. Employee vests in ten versus five years, and the employee receives one and three-quarter for each year of service up to thirty-five years. So therefore, an employee who works twenty years will get thirty-five percent of the retirement salary, or one and three-quarters times twenty, times thirty-five. Let me just point out that, again, what I mentioned earlier, is that if you consider normal working years, if you would, to be between the ages of twenty or twenty-one or even eighteen, depends where you want to start, to the age sixty-five, you're looking at forty-five years. I'm only using twenty. I'm only using twenty here to show that they would get, if they worked for the county for twenty years, they would get thirty-five percent of their salary as computed by the plan, which I believe is the highest thirty-six consecutive months in the last five years averaged out. So, basically, what you have here is, if an employee worked for us for twenty years first, and they started at twenty, at age forty, they can leave here, and when they're sixty-five, get their thirty-five percent at that time. Or if they worked somewhere else, twenty, twenty-five years, and received a pension plan there or had a 401K or nothing for that matter, and realized and woke up at age forty, forty-five, I have nothing, they could come to work for the county and end up being under this plan and walk away with the thirty-five percent defined benefit plan at that time to complement their social security, as somebody previously said, if it's still there. So, again, it's a reduction, but as you can see, for the new employee, they come in knowing after twenty years, they still would get thirty-five percent of their retirement for the twenty working years at the county, if that's the case. Of course, that percentage times, one-point-seven-five times thirty-five years, the maximum, of course, takes that higher as well. I think somewhere around seventy percent, I guess. So, that's the difference there for regular employees. And I don't like to use the word regular, but they don't have any other word that we have there. Public safety, slight, just slight change, the retirement for public safety today is fifty-five versus the other employees at sixty, five-year difference in early reduced, same five-year vest, same two-and-a-half percent, and again, same fifty percent. Again, the proposal is to raise everything, raise the age by five years from fifty-five to sixty, still allow for a reduced five years earlier, vested in ten years, one-point-seven-five up to thirty-five years, and again, the same thirty-five percent would be available with twenty years of employment. This next one is not one I really want to go through, since you're my boss, but I put this together as a proposal as well. Class three is the commissioners, formula is as follows, you take twelve-hundred dollars times the number of years accredited service, divide by twelve equals a monthly benefit. So, if you are in office four years, that's forty-eight-hundred, divided by twelve is four hundred dollars per month. If it's two terms, eight years, it would be eight hundred dollars a month, basically a hundred dollars a month. Under the proposal here, and again, strictly a proposal, what I've done is I've reduced the twelve-hundred dollars by twenty percent. And the reason I did that is that current, during this year, the board reduced their pay from forty-three thousand nine-thirty-nine to thirty-five thousand or roughly twenty percent. And in reducing it twenty percent, what I did is to take the same twenty percent of the twelve-hundred and made it nine-sixty. And again, the calculation then comes out that that would be three-twenty a month for four years or six-forty a month for an eight-year term. There is an issue that we're researching right now, and that is that, that is what if it's a two-year term, would it qualify? Because it's a full term, and that's a question we've got to finalize and resolve for you as well. But a four-year term, and we have a two-year term for some offices because of the changing, trying to get the balance of it. So, if it's a, if a commissioner executes his full term, his or her full term, whether it's two or four, the question becomes, should it be considered not a number of years, but rather a term? So, that's a question that's unanswered and needs to be, again, resolved. Just to put in perspective for you. I'm sorry. If I could here, at the present time, I just took the three categories of commissioner, commissioners, if you would. You have the regular base commissioner, which was at forty-three, went to thirty-five, again, at twelve-hundred dollars a year or nine-sixty now, the percentage was two-point-seven-three, and it's now two-point-seven-four. So, based on a twenty percent reduction, you're at the same quote percentage as before. The vice chair was still getting twenty, twelve-hundred dollars at a higher base salary, but under the new vote that the board did this year, the vice chair's salary has been eliminated. And then, the chairman was at fifty-seven-seven-eight-six, and that went down to fifty-four-seven-fifty-two. Again, the chairman was getting the same twelve-hundred as everybody as per the language, so I just continued to leave it as all commissioners being treated the same as it is presently, reduce it to nine-sixty. So, the chairman was getting two-point-oh-eight, and under the new one with the reduction to nine-sixty, to the extent that's the way you want to go with this, it would be the equivalent of one-point-seven-five percent versus the two before. So, that's just to put in perspective what the chairman and commissioner program is as far as percent, old and new. I'm going to let Mike cover the next slides, which are some items of, just clean up, I guess, and things like that.
Thank you. All the slides that the county manager's been talking about has been the old versus the new, the two plans, if you will, A and B. The next couple of slides that I'm going to talk about are, this is the, when somebody gets ready to retire, instead of it being two separate sets of rules, what I'm going to talk about are rules that are now, will affect both plans and will be, you know, the same for both sets of plans. And this is amendment one to the ACCG defined benefit plan versus the other one was the adoption agreement amendment, which is a little bit different. Again, this is just going to take some terms or definitions and change them. Originally, in the first defined benefit plan or Plan A, if you will, break of service was defined as, under the hours of service method, any consecutive twelve-month period during which such employee fails to complete more than five-hundred hours of service with the employer. Or the other method, which is the elapsed time method, would be an employee who has a severance of more than twelve consecutive months. In the new plan, that is changed to, instead of saying a break of twelve months for the five-hundred hours, it's now six months in the five-hundred hours or six consecutive months. So, it's just reduced the level of time of a break in service. So, if somebody was to leave today and they're gone less than six months, they can be in the plan they originally were in. If it's more than a six-month window, they would come back in the new plan.
Along those lines, at the time, we were talking about with GEP Core, Steve Vaughn and the others, about looking at the plan and issues such as this, the discussion of twelve months versus six months and so on and so forth came up. One of the things that, upon some things, recent things that come up and thoughts of last year, one of the things that I throw out there for consideration is, for those employees who were laid off, let's say, last year or positions have been eliminated since then, instead of holding it to a six-month, going to a six-month for them, leave it at twelve months, define it as those that have been, have lost their position, if you would, due to county reduction as opposed to they just decided to quit. So, I think, I believe that would be a recommendation I would make is to, instead of being it strictly a reduction to six months overall for everybody, put some type of criteria so that if an employee can return, that was, as a result of reduction enforced, eliminating positions or whatever, they'd have the option to come back under the old plan, provided, again, as the present plan states, within twelve months instead of reducing it to six. Again, that's a consideration, if anything, is to be on any proposed changes to the plan.
The next change is under section ten-point-oh-six of the original document, which deals with the repayment of lump-sum pensions. And it says, no credited service shall be restored unless participant repays the premium lump-sum payment as specified in this section. And under the new plan, again, this affects all employees, not just new or previous employees, it says that no credited service will be stored because a lump-sum repayment is not allowed under this new section. So, if somebody takes out a payment, a lump-sum payment, and they come back, they would immediately come back and start over under the new plan with no ability to buy back any of their previous time. The next section, I should have done that. The next section is eleven-point-oh-two. Again, this is dealing with credited service shall not be restored in accordance with this section unless previous lump-sum cash payments had been repaid in accordance with section four-point-oh-nine and section ten-point-six. Well, under the new plan, as we just talked about, ten-point-oh-six doesn't allow that anymore, and section four-point-oh-nine has been eliminated completely in this new section. And four-point-oh-nine originally dealt with repayment of participants' contribution accounts. So, again, it's all dealing with, if somebody was to retire and draw out their money, then they cannot put it back into the plan. They will, they have the benefit to draw it out, they draw it out, it's not able to be put back into the plan. And that's what, under this one, it says, you know, four-point-oh-nine is going to be completely eliminated, and section ten-point-six does not allow for repayment. And those are the changes that are on both plans that basically are the major changes that we've been able to determine as of this point. I'll turn it back over to-
Mr. Preston.
The only question I was going to add to was, because I know you're bringing this back for more discussion, is if you're going to look at the city of Atlanta, because, you know, because they have been getting praise on what they did, because I think they took a portion of the savings and actually reinvested it back in public safety and some other departments. So, there might be some opportunities to see if we can look at that. The other part is, is I know we're using seven and three-quarters, but just to give everybody true perspective of how big that potential liability could be if we have a stagnant economy for the coming three or four years, is there any way to call GEP Core and see what that number would look like if it was seven percent? Because I know some actuarial, you know, just to, because I know some plans have gone to seven and a half or seven percent, and I'm not saying we would, but I'd just like to know what that number looks like.
I'll let you put GEP Core on the spot.
Okay.
Steve Vaughn, who's been working with us on this and a lot of other, obviously, pension issues related, so if he has an answer, I'll let him provide that.
The Board of Trustees who manages this program, and BJ for a while was on that board, we appreciated her service, is looking at that question consistently. And one of the issues that has come up, which I think will come back to this board and many other boards next year, will be to look at what they might want to do as an alternative method for looking at their own funding in terms of an interest rate. So, for example, let's assume for a moment the board says, we think seven and three-quarters over a twenty, thirty-year period makes sense, we know we've run, however, for the purposes of Henry County or County Y, they may want to have a funding policy that assumes some different rate, maybe seven, maybe six and a half. And at that point, we will be then giving estimates to every county based on their own desired funding rate as opposed to the overall rate for the program. It's, Gatsby's coming up with some new standards, reporting standards. I only bring that to tell you that it was reinforced, we will be happy to do whatever estimate somebody wants in terms of seven, seven and a quarter, six and a half. But I do think that it's going to go bigger than that over the next year, is that each body will likely have to think about what they may want as an alternative look at what it would cost at a different rate. So, if they want to pay it down faster, they could.
And to the point that if you use a six as opposed to seven and three-quarters, speak to the fact of what it would do to the unfunded at that point.
Every, these are rough numbers, but every quarter percent drop in that, and again, it's different for every plan. A mature plan has a different ratio than a young plan.
Sure.
But you're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of probably a seven to ten percent increase generally in unfunded liability immediately-
Just for each quarter.
-just to change that funding ratio by quarter. And again, it varies, there could be some below that and certainly could be some above that. But the fact of the matter is, it is a significant impact, which is why it is looked at carefully and is not done, I think, within the last twenty years, it has been changed once, and that was from eight to seven and three-quarters. And I will say that as an aside, from nineteen ninety through two thousand twelve, the annual aggregate return for the ACCG program through, through September thirtieth was eight-point-oh-eight percent.
Right.
You can have, can you address the Atlanta situation? Have you followed that or heard more detail?
No, I'll be happy to look at it, except that I know, one of the things I always have to look at is the differences in terms of their underlying structure. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but it's my understanding, for example, that the Atlanta system, either some or all of their employees do not participate in social security. Those kinds of things make huge differences.
The police department did not participate in social security at all.
So, when you talk about trying to compare plans and benefits and structures, having a social security plan versus not having one and add it into the overall program, you have to look at some apples and oranges comparison. So, we'd be happy to look at that more, but I know that's one big difference.
The only reason I bring that up is that these are unique times, but it's unique times that many systems are facing. And I think Mike and Fred have done a good job, but I always like benchmarking other communities just to kind of see what has been successful, and so we can get an idea to, so we're not reinventing the will. I mean, you know, this is, because, and the only reason I've asked all these questions about the defined contribution, the seven percent interest rate, is I wanted, I feel like we need to frame the perspective that the county truly is trying to help our employees still, still trying to put a very generous plan in place. And I'm worried that just by saying we're going to cut these benefits for the incoming employees off the cuff, that looks like, wow, these guys are looking to reduce, you know, their responsibilities just full bore without really framing the picture with how big the obligation is. Just by the seven to ten percent that you were talking about, at a minimum, this jumps up to over fifty million dollars. I mean, because I, believe me, when you said eight percent from nineteen ninety to now, I'd love to have the nineties back, but if you drop out that decade of the nineties, you're probably dropping that rate of return down to about five and a half percent if I had to guess it. So, I just want to make sure we're putting this in a perspective so that the citizens as well as our employees, you know, this, we're trying to be, the county looks to be making very generous strides, just because this is a situation that there's no good way out of it. And that's really why I was framing it that way, is because I think a little more data points would kind of bring our employees into the fold a little bit more.
We certainly could, and as a, just as a general perspective, they did work hard, and I think this is, there are a number of jurisdictions, we work with a number of them, and believe me, most of what I personally do most of the time are things like this.
And if you give me another little bit of a perspective, because actuarial tables tie by the age of your workforce. And Fred and I have had discussions, because when I was on the school system, the school system's jumped up to where now they're requiring an eleven percent funding or twelve percent, it's going in the double digits. And when Fred and I talked about it, I said, you know, I worry about Henry County, if I had to guess, we're probably in the mid-forties with our workforce average age. Is that approaches, if that ages, this gets even more expensive from a funding standpoint if we don't get better rates of return? And that's the part, I'd love to know what the average rate of, average employment age is for Henry County and compare that to a few benchmarks, too.
You're generally younger.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So, we're cheaper.
Yes, yes. Yes, as someone who probably, you know, appreciates some of the nuances of that, yes, that is true. But I will tell you that generally, what county manager and finance director has done over the past several months in talking with us, is really tried to step down but not be drastic or dramatic.
Right.
We've had a number of things that have gone from here to here.
Not to Henry County.
Not in Henry County, no. But that's what I'm saying, there are those that have just made really huge changes, many long-term impacts, many significant issues going forward.
And that's kind of my point, if you all could show us those that have made the drastic so, put the perspective for our citizens as well as our employees to kind of know what other communities have had to do.
I can certainly work with these two and work together in terms of any sort of revised presentation you'd want on that basis.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Just as Steve mentioned about Atlanta being with, without social security and so on and so forth, and trying to compare apples and oranges, if you would, when you start getting into it, one of the other issues for Henry County in comparison when I did this- this back, as we were doing the budget, was to take a look at other counties through the help of GEP Corps and the HR Department, taking a look at other plans that GEP Corps manages and what they're doing. What I did find, and I have some here, is some of the other counties, surrounding counties, if you would, are at less than two and a half like we are. But the key problem, or key problem in the comparison is the employees' contribution, mandatory contribution, where there's less going to the employee as accredited service, typically there's less going in by the employee mandatorily. So for example, Bets, is their retirement's a percent and a half. And again, you have to take a look at what the employee's putting in, but they're not putting anything in. So they have a lesser 1.5%. So competitively, they're going to get 1.5% at the end of whatever, 10 years, 20 years, and I don't know the vesting, I just, I can add that to it. Newton is 1%. Rockdale is 1 and 3 quarters, Spalding is 1, Walton is 1, Clayton is 2.5 as we are, but their contribution is 12.9 versus our 8.8. And I suspect their budget issues, they've got, I'm not, never mind, I won't get into Clayton, I've got other issues with Henry County. The Fayette is 1.5%, and again, their employees, though, are putting in 2.5%. The Henry County Board of Education, theirs is, unless it's changed since then, was 2%. So our 2.5 is comparison to, here in the county, the Board of Education at 2. So going to 1 and 3 quarters for new employees, again, not the present employees, preserving the 2.5 for present, new employees being 1 and 3 quarters still is almost comparable to what the Board of Education's doing with their 2% and some of the other counties, et cetera. So you can get more information to make whatever evaluation. I brought this intentionally to this board because I had said earlier, during the budget process, this was one of the items I was concerned about, hadn't had any attention to it, wanted to offer a possible solution, something to consider. Right, I just said today for the exec, at this workshop, I have it on for tomorrow to take it to you, for you to consider. If your plan is not to hear it tomorrow, then obviously you can table it, do it a later date or whatever, but at this point, it is an agenda item for tomorrow, however you see fit to have answers for more questions before tomorrow, we'll try to get them. But again, I felt it necessary to bring this to the board for at least a overview of a possible way to solve what I see as a looming problem, future problem.
All right, any other questions or comments? Mr. Holder?
First of all, I will not support, neither will I vote for this proposal. Why do I say that? All of the issues that are taking place here will take place in 2013, after this board is gone. I'm reminded of a couple of years ago, over in Conference Run B, we were told that we had overfunded our pension plan, and files were taken out of the pension fund as overpayments or overfunding to support the budget. Now, we're obviously short. I believe the comments were made over there that day by me, that we, that was very dangerous, because the same thing had just happened to General Motors and various other organizations, many of the cities and the counties that have been mentioned here to date. In this previous election cycle, there were very pointed issues about pension. The PBA, in one of their questions, that each one of us as candidates seeking election answered, they actually wanted to raise the multiplier from 2.5 to 4 for public safety employees. My comment was absolutely not, unless it's raised for all. But the proposal is to take the multiplier down for all. I'm not going to make that decision. We have seated here, seated here this morning, five of the six people that will be making the decisions that will affect all employees under this proposed program. As far as Warren is concerned, they're the ones that are going to make that decision, not me. And I just want to make it very clear. And I'm not, and neither have you, but nor me, I'm not afraid to make a decision. But to me, this decision is not mine to make.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Holmes?
I just want to say, I'm on board with Warren. I don't support this at all. As a matter of fact, I think we should table it until the next board comes aboard.
Again, that's, again, I bring this as a workshop item for the leisure of the board, whatever the decision is, I just brought the facts, and to whatever extent it doesn't make sense, that is curious.
I think what you brought is realistic. I'm not arguing that point at all, and I appreciate you bringing it to let people know what is forthcoming. I'm just saying, this board affecting future items that are going to be affected, affecting the new board, should not be made by this board, it should be made by the new board. And then it's theirs to craft and make happen with it what they have, with the evidence and the ingredients that are there, then they can make it whatever they want to. But it affects them. I don't want to do something that's going to affect someone else. And in this case, certainly in a negative way, and when I'm saying in a negative way, I know we've talked about, it's been proposed, not going to go there again, about the age of the workers, and many new employees don't look at that, they're looking at a paycheck and the most dollars that they can take home to support their family at the time. I understand all of that, but the new board needs to be the one to ferret out all of what they want and what they think is best for the new employees.
This is a huge decision. I mean, it's not a decision where you open up your book and you see the resolution and you come in and vote on it. I mean, we need to have a number of meetings to discuss and get, put all the facts on the table, so we can make an informed decision, because you have a lot of families and employees here that are looking forward to this, their pension. You know, they haven't had a raise in a number of years, they're already disgruntled. We need to make sure that we take care of our employees and that we don't have a high turnover rate, because there's a cost associated with that as well. So I just recommend that we table it, I'm not exactly sure where the other board members are, but this is definitely something that needs to be reviewed by the new board.
And again, like I said, I had mentioned during the budget cycle, there was, this was one of the issues that had not been addressed. Mr. Holder just mentioned, two years ago, I wasn't here when the subject was discussed of credits and so on. Upon further research, tried to figure out what the unfunded liability, I felt it was time to bring that to a visible understanding, which is what I've tried to do here, to say there is this unfunded liability. It is there, it's looming, it can get bigger. The bigger problem for me is, is the 8.8 going to be able to be sustainable, and if it is not during the next budget cycle and cycles after that, if we have to continue to put more as a percent of our salaries into the pension plan, it's just money that is to be drawn away from other things. So there's, it's an issue, I just bring it forward, I'm not here to tell you this is the best, I feel this is a very palatable solution, it isn't the only one, as has been mentioned, but it one that, as I said, for this board and working with you earlier this year on the budget, I felt it was something to bring the issue forward and define what that problem was.
Any other comments?
I have a question for Tanya.
I really waited till you got up and walked away.
I was going to wait for that back in the back, but I thought I'd catch you. But I think we've had this conversation before, and I feel the same way Warren does about this, and I'm sat here looking at three board members coming on, and we can't, can we modify their benefit plan before they come in? And if they come in at that present benefit level sworn in on the first, is that benefit package good for that entire election cycle?
The compensation and salary of someone in office cannot be reduced during their term of office. The benefit, the retirement benefit that Commissioners currently get is not a salary, it's not their approved salary, it's a benefit.
Benefit.
So that could be reduced, I believe, but the salaries could not, could not be altered in that manner. So that's my off the cuff answer, I have not researched, I've never seen anything that encompasses benefit, such as health insurance benefits. I've never seen anything that says that's considered a part of the salary such that that can't be altered.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
All right, two things, two points I just want to make, and then you can decide whether you want to pull this off the agenda for tomorrow based on the comments that you've had. Warren, I want to make it clear that this pension plan was put in place in 2003 before the majority of us were on the board, and there was a substantial liability in place the moment it was put into effect, okay? Because sometimes as you get into the political environment, people tend to try to put blame where blame doesn't always belong. So I just wanted to make that point, that was prior to my term in office, and the majority of the board, I think Warren, you were probably here at the time, but that liability was existing from day one of this pension plan, and it was amortized over a period of time to be paid into the fund, 20, 30 years, whatever the term was that was set up. So I wanted to make that clear. And then the other thing I wanted to make clear, and this is for the benefit of the County Manager and the Finance Director, because I think it needs to be restated, this was not a proposal to affect any current employee's pension that is with the county employed today. So I know how the rumor mills can sometimes get started, and before the end of the day, you're trying to take away their pension plan. This was not intended to affect any employee that is currently employed by Henry County government, so I just felt like I needed, for your sake, to make that clear.
Again, from my perspective, it was a means by which to preserve the present plan by finding a means by which to correct the issue we have, not on the, with the present employees, but again, with a contract with future employees, and it's just one of maybe many, many ways to do it, but that's just, again, how I try to present it, working with GEP Corps and the Finance Department, to give something for the board to consider.
Mr. Holder?
One final comment. I was here in '03 when the plan went into place, and I'm going to defer to Mike Bush on this one, and I think you may have that information, but in the first line item you saw in that was like a $20 million contribution into the plan, is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
Explain where that $20 million came from.
Okay. Henry County was in a 401, 457-
Employee-owned, defined compensation.
Yes, sir. 457, the employees were mandatory to put in 6%, the county matched 6% with the 401.
That's correct.
When this plan became, started being worked on or whatever, the original thought was to take the 401, and it buys back 100% of everybody's service. Well, the problem with that is, somebody might have been here for 20 years, and we only had a 401 for eight. So somebody was going to get 12 years for nothing. And so what we did is we said, well, first of all, we said, we don't think that this plan will work by funding 100% of it by the 401. So we went back in and we looked at the 401 providing 50% of the past service, and the county employees putting in some of their money, the 457, to buy back the other 50%.
That is correct. But those funds were funded by the employees themselves-
Yes, sir.
-and not by the county, is that not correct?
The county put the 401, and the employees put the 457 on equal halves, and what happened is, the reason you wound up, wound up with an unfunded liability is that the amount of money that was put in was not the same amount of money when you do the multiplier to figure out what people were going to get paid, it had a unfunded liability to begin with. So maybe I had $100 in the plan, but it needed 120, so that $20 is an unfunded liability.
And they allowed you to stretch payment of that into the pension plan for a period of time?
For 30 years.
For 30 years. So you had 30 years to get that extra $20 in there.
And that, that also, as Commissioner Preston has said, that was contingent on an average of an 8% return on that money being invested, and, you know, since 2003, it has not generated an 8% return on the average. So that's why the unfunded liability has continued to grow.
I just wanted to make sure that the people knew that the whole fund that was, the initial funding was not done by the county, it was done by the employees, and half of it was by the employees, correct?
I'm going to play the part of Commissioner Holder here, because I actually, even though I was not County Commissioner, I've been in the community doing, you know, business consulting, financial advice, and I had several employees come to me with this proposal back in 2003. And what I remember about it was, is it was the biggest no-brainer for the employees to do it. I mean, because you essentially, and I think a lot of it, we have to kind of go back in time and think about what happened in 2000, 2001, 2002. Stock market had the internet bubble that burst, and I think this was probably, and the economy was cranking, especially here in Henry County, we were probably the second fastest growing community, and I can kind of see what happened, is that the Commissioners started worrying about the health of their employees getting devastated by the dot-com bubble being burst. This was a way, because we had so much money, and it sounds ridiculous to say it now, but things were, we were fat and happy back then with money coming in, and unfortunately, we're now paying the price for that good intention. I mean, and it's, I don't, there's no huge fault, except for it was a deal that was too good to be true in large parts. The assumptions have not held up, and that's how we've gone from a $20 million obligation to 42, assuming seven and three quarters to over 50 million, if you actually drop that down to 7% if we don't grow at a faster rate. So I feel like I'm honing some, Commissioner Holder there by giving a little bit of history, because I do remember when this was implemented, just from a citizen helping out some employees.
Just remember, no good deed goes unaccounted.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
All right, if there are no further comments, we'll move on in the agenda. You didn't have anything for public session, did you?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Ms. County Attorney, any comments?
Upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, Tuesday, December the 4th at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. Monday, December 17th at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. There will not be a meeting on Tuesday, December 18th, Tuesday, December 24th, and Wednesday, December 25th. All county offices will be closed in observance of the Christmas holiday. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, and/or land acquisition matters.
So, maybe?
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Preston, all in favor, motion carries 4-0. I need a motion to reconvene into public session. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor, motion carries 4-0. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
So, maybe?
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor, motion carries 4-0. If there's no further business to come before the board, I need a motion to adjourn.
Would you adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Stamey and second by Mr. Preston, all in favor, motion carries 4-0, we stand adjourned.